Let's call the Steve Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, August 4th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pickly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Bill moved. Larry seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. All right, well, I guess we won't have Linda do the Pledge of Allegiance. So.
She's just coming on right now.
Okay, so let's wait for her. Okay, welcome. We are at the Pledge of Allegiance. And, okay. Okay, Larry, do you want to lead us?
Well, sure. I'd be pleased to do that. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which we stand. One nation. Indivisible.
I almost missed my chair. Okay. Public comments regarding items which can be, items that can be affected by council action. And I know we have some folks on here that probably want to talk about assessments on number seven. And I think most of you want to wait till number seven. If not, you can speak now, first, last name and address. Or if there's somebody that wants to speak on another item on the agenda. And I'll turn it over the meeting to Inga first.
I'm just looking here for members of the public. So Chuck Nelson, you're on mute. I assume that you're here for the one agenda item, the Janesville Street?
Correct.
Okay. And Lucas Murphy, I assume the same thing?
Correct.
Um, Mike? And I, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
No, that's okay. Mike Jenklin, I'm with Farner Asphalt Sealers. And I just, I'm here regarding the road bids. And just wanted to be here on the meeting in case there's any questions.
Great, thank you. And then Frank Hyland, you're here for the Janesville Street discussion as well, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. Then I think everyone else, everyone's going to be able to speak then during that agenda item.
All right, let's start over. I'm unmuted now. Approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion? Linda is moving. Devin is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number six, discussion of possible action regarding amendment to the TIF Development Agreement and Capital Asset Investments LLC assigning the agreement to Caliber Assets LLC.
So the owner of the building located at 1850 Putman Parkway, which houses the Diamond Assets business, has approached the city and has indicated that they are in negotiations and the ends of negotiations to sell that building to Caliber Assets LLC. And as such would need to assign the TIF Development Agreement and its rights and obligations to Caliber Assets LLC. So this is a similar action that the city took just a few years ago when we assigned the TIF Development Agreement from Backyard Properties to Capital Asset Investments LLC. And now they are transferring the TIF Development Agreement to Caliber Assets LLC contingent upon closing occurring, which they believe will occur at some time later in August. So we would be, it wouldn't change any of the mechanisms of the TIF Development Agreement, any of the rights or obligations or agreements that they've made in terms of minimum property tax value guarantee or anything of that nature. Simply just changes the responsible party from Capital Asset Investments LLC to Caliber Assets LLC.
Okay, we'll do our usual procedure. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Devin?
No question.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Larry?
Yes, I have a question. Bill, if for some reason the sale did occur, or you know, something came up, there was a glitch of some kind, then the current agreement just remains in effect, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the agreement would need to be signed by Capital Assets, or I'm sorry, would need to be signed by Caliber Assets. So in order to make it go into effect. So if the sale never happened, their signature would never, obviously, they wouldn't take on that responsibility. So the remaining agreement would, the existing agreement would remain in effect.
That's helpful. I was just curious about that, if this negated their agreement automatically, but it doesn't. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make the motion to approve the TIF changes, or how should I address this, Mark? Is, do I, do I need to designate both parties, or how should I make this motion?
It's sufficient to state, motion to approve the August 4th, 2020 amendment to the TIF Development Agreement dated June 15th, 2017.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Ryan seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action on final resolutions 2020 regarding assessments for the sanitary sewer main installation along North Janesville Street. And I'll, but staff, whoever's going to speak on this, go first. And then we'll take public comments and then we'll go to council, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, I can start it off, just for sake of background references. As folks may recall, at the July 21st meeting, there was a discussion regarding the Resolution 2020, which would levy assessments for the sanitary sewer main installation along North Janesville Street. The council held a public hearing and there was considerable input from the public regarding concerns about the assessment appropriation in terms of how the assessment was being levied for the installation of that facility, the size of that facility, the depth of that facility, and what benefit may be derived from the property owners at time that they hook up in the future. So the direction received from staff by the council was to take a look at the assessment that was, or the project that was bid and accepted, and try to break out the costs that would be associated for a more traditional installation of a sanitary sewer in an existing neighborhood or existing corridor, and see what those costs would be as opposed to the costs for the size main and depth of main that is being proposed for construction in this area to serve future development sites. So included in your packet is a memo written by city engineer Mark Langer dated July 30th, 2020, in which he has done so by breaking out those costs. You can see he has three tables in there, ultimately resulting in a reduction in what the staff would be proposing in terms of a new assessment based on that direction by the council. And I can kick it over to Mark Langer if he wants to discuss any of those items in greater detail or provide any additional background.
Yeah, so generally, what I tried to do is take a look at the bid items and the costs and compare them with past projects and other past experiences within the city. And you could see the two tables, table one and two, table one in particular has a large reduction in reinforced concrete pavement. Again, that work, that 400 square yards that's reduced would be, you know, likely some of that, or all of that not needed, some of the original bid. If the sewer main were put in at a shallower depth, that resulted in fairly substantial project savings. And then under the second table, the biggest piece of that was the reduction in cost to installing a 10-inch sewer compared with an eight-inch sewer in a new, new construction. And that number was derived from discussions with the contractor who was the low bid on the project. Other than that, I guess if there's specific questions about the memo, please ask. Do my best to answer them.
So Inga, if you want to acknowledge our guests that would like to speak on this item, I think most of you were here for the public hearing. And we asked that you be respectful, kind, do your best to stay to the three-minute limit. And first and last name and address.
And just quick, I did send out an email that I received from Pat Murphy today, so to all the council members and the staff. The first person I see on the screen is Chuck Nelson.
So I guess at first I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and Mark for all the hard work that you've done in providing us with an unbundled information for the city's future development project on North Janesville Street. That being said, I did find the last couple of days have been very eye-opening for me after several Milton residents from other parts of the city have contacted me to let me know that, that they were very upset on how the city was handling the future development project on North Janesville Street and could not understand why only a few property owners on North Janesville Street are being forced to pay the portion of this development. And one of their comments was why something like this isn't being covered by all the taxpayers paying for the future development. And it just didn't seem right. I was told that, it was felt that, you know, if needed, they would have attended this meeting with at least 20, 30 people to speak out about their concerns. I personally didn't think this was necessary at this point, since the council's doing a good job of looking at all the options. And I expect the council will make the right decision when it's all done. And of course, we all know that it'd be really crazy on a Zoom meeting to have all these people on there. And you can imagine how many hours that would have took. So, but I did want to identify that I have had several residents reach out to me about this. Didn't realize it was as big a topic as it is. That being said, I have reviewed the information and I feel that the city's not going to step up to the plate as far as covering the costs, you know, like any other developers required to do. We're still being special assessed way higher at $140.40 a linear foot. And here's why I feel that way. The city as a developer is paying for the project at $353,439 to do a project for future development. You're asking eight property owners to pick up $232,362, which is actually over 50% of this cost for a future development. You have asked, you know, you have to ask yourself, is this fair and is it even ethical? Considering we've been told on average projects for new developments run, we've heard everywhere from $55 a foot to $70 a foot. We on average are being asked to pay $21,000 per property and some are as high as $35,000 a property for this special assessment. Myself, for my total property is actually $44,000. But let's break this down into some simple math and why something's missing in our approach here, I feel. Take one lot, 99-foot lot, that's a pretty average city lot on North Janesville Street. City fair market value on that lot is $17,700. The new special assessment against that lot at $140.40 is $13,899, just to have the pipe in front of the property. That's not the connector and just that, say, I got a piece of pipe out there. That leaves that lot with $3,801. Then don't forget, the property also has another special assessment on it that will need to be paid for the city water problem that we have down at the condos, which was reconfirmed on May 5th meeting. That's another $9,064. We now have a negative loss on this piece of property of $5,263. Negative loss. Can't sell it for what it's a fair market value is. So that's negative. And at this point, I haven't even covered the original cost of the property when it was purchased, the taxes, the upkeep over the years it was owned. So it, this special assessment is putting us in, you know, this is an example that holds true for all the property owners. Some worse than, than this example, like Pat Murphy, who will have to pay $58,326 just to build a house. So let me under, help me understand how you can expect 11 property owners to take this burden on of the whole city's future developments. This to me just kind of feels like where things are going. Ask yourself again, is this fair and is it ethical? I don't know one developer in this, this area that would be able to put these kind of costs against a single lot. If they did, I'd be really surprised if they're still in business very long. So I'll keep it short. In conclusion, I'm asking you to really evaluate all the information and do what's fair and ethical.
Thanks, Chuck. I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. And Chuck, this isn't a question to you, it's a question to staff and whoever wants to take it. And I just want to understand for myself. My understanding was that there was a septic that was failing. And this is what initiated this. Was there some sort of development occurring that I'm not aware of, or that this was, we were going to do this development, this new sewer anyways? Because I, I'm not, I was thinking that it was because we had some septic issues and not a new development coming in, but I could be wrong. And I just want to make sure I'm asking the right question and trying to understand it.
Yeah, this, this project was as a result of a property sale along North Janesville Street in which an evaluation was done of their septic system, which showed that the septic system was failing and would need to be abandoned. So the former owner of the home contacted the city and said, hey, my septic is failing. I need to connect to city sanitary sewer. That's how this all started. So there's no, there's no known development at this time. I think the idea where the development comes in is in the event that development, a development request comes in for properties north of North Janesville Street. If we were to construct the sanitary sewer in a fashion that only served these 11 properties, we would not be able to serve a development site to the north, which would allow the city to continue to grow. Or we would have to go back and dig up the eight-inch sewer main that was installed to serve these 11 sites and install a 10-inch main at a much greater depth. So the decision was made to install the main at the size and depth to allow for future development if it were to occur, when it is to occur, which is the common practice throughout the entire community and, and most other communities that I'm aware of, that have an urban service boundary, which, which we do, and which all communities are required to have by state law. So it's, it's, it's in, it's in anticipation of development that may occur in the future to allow us to be in a position to not undo work that had been done and to put us in a position to grow.
So if we just, I thought I was reading the figures that, well, let me assess. What would the assessment be to each of these lots? I, I thought I understood it in one of those tables. If we just did sewer to these lots, would it be different than what's shown on these tables?
No, that's what Mark has outlined in his memo as, I believe, table three. Table three would be the estimated assessment charges if we were to install an eight-inch main at a depth to serve those 11 lots. That's what table three is. So if we, if we were just to say, we're going to install an eight-inch main to serve those 11 lots and we're not going to prepare for future development, that's what the assessments would be, is what's shown in table three. Correct, Mark?
Yeah, those numbers are based on the revisions in table one and table two that were estimated in discussion with the contractor, estimated reductions in quantities. I think some of the, you know, we hear this, the $55 a foot number and the $70 a foot number, that's only the pipe. This project, there's other pieces as a result of the work being done within an existing corridor where there's pavement, turf restoration, other, other, other costs that are included in the project to put it back to the state it was before the work took place.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that I was understanding it because I don't pretend to be an expert in any of those. Inga, who's next?
Okay, um, next person would be Lucas Murphy.
My name is Lucas Murphy. Excuse me. And I live at 362 North Janesville Street. Good evening, and thank you for providing me an opportunity to speak regarding final resolution 2020-20. During the public hearing on July 21st, I saw that our block is a textbook definition of a situation requiring a new approach. Thank you for listening, acknowledging that our situation is unique, and most of all being open to looking for a new approach for this assessment. I'd also like to thank Mark Langer for putting in a significant amount of time researching and writing the detailed memo for tonight's meeting. I collect and review data for a living, so I fully appreciate data-driven decisions. The information provided by Mark is a big part of making a fair assessment, but is not the entire puzzle. Even with a 33% reduction, you're still asking us to pay $140.40 a foot when the subdivision is seeing $7 a foot installation cost, which would actually be assessed at $35 a foot to each parcel. I understand their additional costs because we are existing properties, but we did not build our houses here. This was done a long time ago, so we didn't have the choice to have us installed. And personally, I'm being asked to pay $23,500. My septic fails for the right to hook up to city sewer. The seller at 331 North Janesville Street had to quote $8,000 to replace the septic. I called Mark Nell's excavation on July 14th and he gave me a price of $10,000 for a typical mound system for a three-bedroom house. I personally know someone who had a new mound system installed at a price of $10,000 last year. If my septic were to fail tomorrow, you're asking me to pay over twice the replacement cost of a new septic that would meet our house's needs for the next 40 years. This is not reasonable and this is a huge burden on my family. We should not be required to sell off half of our lot just so we can afford to hook up when we are required to. While I feel we've moved significantly in the right direction, we are still a long way from coming up with a reasonable assessment for the sewer main that is fair to everyone and ethical. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Inga?
Um, there is someone that's just listed as Galaxy S10. I'm not sure who that is, but you can unmute if you'd like to speak. Galaxy S10, would you like to speak?
Hello?
Hi!
Hi, this is Joshua Brunk. I'm at 382 North Janesville Street. So I just wanted to brief in and support my neighbors here. They, we've all been doing some more homework and a lot of meeting and listening to each other. And really, I can't do too much more to reinforce Chuck's fantastic numbers that he ran for us and just shows the magnitude of the costs reflected on us. You know, I was here for the other meeting and to reinforce Luke, this is a burden on our future decisions. And I think we have, we were reduced from 49 to 32,000, but that number is still way higher. And, and just like the rest of the neighborhood here, just supporting, I think, a mutual feeling of distress with how this special assessment is being utilized just by pure numbers. It looks, the optics are bad. And I see Chuck was able to reach out to people too. I'm actively reaching out to, to other communities and other sources of information and people that can guide us on our quest here to get a better fair assessment for what this is. So thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Inga?
Okay, and that takes us to Frank Hyland.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Frank Hyland. My wife Joanne and I co-own and live at 371 North Janesville Street. We don't fundamentally object to the North Janesville Street sanitary sewer main extension project. However, we are 100% opposed to Resolution Number 2020-20 and the special assessment it imposes on our property. Two points support our position. First, by this resolution, the city wants us to pay the cost for solving a non-problem. Rock County, the state of Wisconsin, and the federal EPA all agree that a well-maintained septic system is a safe, healthy, and environmentally responsible residential waste processing option. Our property already has a well-maintained, serviced, and properly inspected septic system, fully compliant with all Rock County regulations applicable to it. Besides, we know how to keep it that way. Plus, we're willing and able to do just that and pay for it ourselves without any help from the city in terms of sewer handling capacity or dollars spent. Yet the city claims a "reasonable basis" to make us pay for a sewer main extension that's of no positive net value to us and doesn't eliminate any real community hazard. We simply have no reason to believe that any such basis exists. Second, none of the concerns we raised during the one public hearing on the project assessments have been adequately addressed by the common council, if at all. To refresh, we have many technical issues and others about a project of this cost magnitude. Why isn't the city talking with us in this regard? At best, this sewer project may be of some future benefit to all of Milton, but it's still a net negative to us specifically. If it does eventually. If it does eventually do some good for all, then fine. We'll gladly pay our fair share because we are responsible Milton citizens. But that's it. If the city wants to develop facilities for future needs, it should behave and take responsibility like any other developer would. If the city thinks it needs more money, then make funding for the project an election ballot referendum item that it should have been all along. That way, the entire city has a say in its future, but we won't be singled out as somehow deficient just because we responsibly and rightfully choose to handle our own waste. Saying that we alone should pay, "For benefits conferred on such properties by said improvements", isn't justified, but it is definitely inappropriate for this project. That's our statement. Ms. Mayor and Inga, if I may, though, I need to add something for another affected property owner. Not for us, but for her.
And what's her first and last name and address?
We're speaking on behalf of Donna Moore, and her address is 387 North Janesville Street. She is immediately north of our property.
Go ahead.
We are not speaking for her. We're not speaking for Donna, but we want you to understand that at some point shortly before the 21st of July meeting, Donna suffered a rather bad accident and is going through a rather rough recovery. And she wasn't able to participate in the 21st public hearing, and she still can't participate because her orders and medical orders are to keep all that stress out of the picture until she's much better off than now. All I'm saying is that she does want to contribute. Ordinarily, her daughter Terry would speak for her, but both times on the 21st and now, Terry has work obligations she just couldn't avoid. So all I'm saying is that Mrs. Moore does want to contribute, and any help that any of us, ourselves included, and yourselves can do to see some or find some way that she can contribute, if not today, hopefully as close in the near future as possible. We greatly appreciate it. That's all I had to add.
Okay, Inga, thank you.
Okay, I am not seeing anyone else from the public to speak on this agenda item. If there is, please unmute yourself and let us know. I'm not seeing anyone, so I am going to mute everyone from the public so then the council can have a time to discuss the agenda item.
All right. I'll start with Bill. Questions or comments?
Just to clarify, based on Mr. Hyland's comments, my understanding is that this assessment would only be charged at the time that the property owner hooked up. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, the framework is such that if, in fact, Mr. Hyland maintained the septic system and it continued to perform properly, he deferred paying for that as long as that septic system continued to operate. Again, is that a correct understanding?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's clarification that I needed. Thank you.
Devin?
No comments.
Linda?
I had actually a lot of my questions and concerns addressed with conversations and emails, but I was just wondering. I know one of the things that the staff was looking for was a different way to possibly pick this up. The difference between the 10-inch and the eight-inch charge. Have we gotten very far with that, or do we still need to look at that? I totally understand what everybody is saying, and I'm... Everybody has problems. So I'm just trying to figure out another way that we could possibly come up with an alternative. I know at the last meeting that we had talked about taking that out of the sewer fund. Is that still a possibility, Dan? And everybody else? Howie?
Well, what Mark outlined in his memo is based on the alternative approach that has been developed that's before you this evening. Approximately $116,596.95 of the total project cost would not be charged to these 11 property owners. So approximately 33% of the total project cost, as outlined in Mark's memo, would not be charged to the property owners, the affected property owners. That $116,596.95, there's been substantive conversations between Mark Langer, myself, and the city attorney as to how to recoup those costs and what mechanism may be available to us to recoup those costs. We have discussed, for lack of a better term, a special hookup fee for future development that may need to join onto this main. We've talked about the concept of an assessment against properties to the north that would be deferred until hookup. There are some complicating factors with that because those properties are not in the city. It's not to say that we can't assess a property that's not within the city, but there are some challenges to that. So we are still evaluating what those possibilities could be, but it likely will result in some sort of special connection fee. I think it's a CAC cost. Mark, help me out. Cost. The CAC fee, what's the...
Contribution in aid of construction?
Contribution in aid of construction fee that would be associated with any future hookups to this main. Not these 11 property owners, but anybody outside of these 11 property owners. The other approach that could be available if there is money in the sewer fund, which there is not much, would be to charge the rest of the ratepayers for this. That would be a new practice established and one that would likely come with some challenges, considering we do assessments on a fairly regular basis. And we assess what the project cost is. Even this approach, this alternative approach of unbundling them and taking a portion of a charge out is a new approach for us and one that we have not undertaken in the past. So we are looking at alternative approaches to recoup that $116,596. Because again, the concept that continues to get bandied about is the city should pick that up. And there is no such thing as "the city." The city is not a private entity that generates revenues or sells goods or stock or anything of that nature. The city is the taxpayers of Milton. So the idea that the city should pick it up, really what that means is everyone else who pays rates should pick it up. We don't have money. We don't make money. We're a governmental entity. So how that would look is either everyone else who pays pays for it, although they've already paid their own assessments, or we look to our special contribution for future hookups, which is the direction that we're leaning. That decision does not need to be made tonight. If the council were to approve Resolution 2020-20 as presented, we could come back at some future date with that, how we would allocate that residual cost. But I wanted to make sure that that's clear. We don't need to make that decision tonight. If there are any future... If there are any additional alterations to Table 3 in Mark's memo, which then corresponds to Resolution 2020-20, it would only increase or decrease that amount that we would have to find a new funding source for. So does that answer your question?
Yes, that does answer my question. Thank you very much. The other thing that I just want to add, and I have been trying to impress this all along, is that there are other people that have been assessed in the city, and one of the things that I want to make sure is that if we are going to do something different here for Janesville Street, then there's another street, Elm Street, that we need to also make different changes to. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that what's good for Janesville Street will have to be good for other improvements. Otherwise, we're just kicking something down the road for other councils to take care of. But I also appreciate that this is an entrance to the city, and one of my pet peeves has been that we needed to do more beautification and other things to our city entrances. So I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed to the city... I don't know exactly what fund we're getting our other improvements out of outside of the infrastructure that Public Works does with water and wastewater, but, you know, maybe something out of the CDA or something to help these folks out with not only this particular issue, but just the fact that they're living in an entrance in the city. And we really do need to address that differently, I believe.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Teresa?
Yes. First of all, I do want to thank everyone. Chuck, Lucas, Joshua from last time, and Pat, who's not here tonight, and Frank, and... Let's see, I guess that's everyone that I can think of now. But you really have provided us with a great deal of background and information. Some that are very unhappy, but that's important to share as well. But I also think that some of, you know, what Linda said and what has been provided also has to be appreciated as well. You know, when Bill asked last time to unbundle the costs, you know, his effort was to bring something back for you, which, when Mark unbundled those costs, the city is looking back at giving a kind of a break, if you will, back to you by looking at those individual costs and having the city look at it differently in providing you with what was talked about, over $100,000 of a break in your costs and having that put back in terms of our costs or the rest of the taxpayers because we're looking at it more of a... Did I say that right? Looking at it in terms of what benefits the city as a whole. And, you know, I think that you have to appreciate that that was a very good suggestion for us to look at it on your behalf and our behalf so that we are trying to look at this together rather than just dumping it all in your lap. So I do, I appreciate your input, and I also appreciate the council's views and the people that work for the city in trying to work this out together. So that's my input.
Teresa Ryan?
And just to add this as a clarification of sorts. Basically, with these changes that Mark has made to this pricing structure, it is now treating as if we're not accounting for new development. The $116,000 basically counts the ad for going to new development. And so this would happen if we're not taking the developments only for those 11 basic properties. So I mean, that's how I'm basically interpreting this. Is that correct, Al?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
If development wasn't a consideration or a concern or an effort or a long-term plan, and we were only going to install the sanitary sewer for these 11 property owners, the cost as bidded by a private entity would be that in Table 3.
And then I was just doing a little bit of digging in the internet, I guess, and just looking for, trying to find similar situations. We have existing residents, not new construction, and the sewer has to be extended because their septic failed. And area I was reading was talking about a 189-foot sewer extension, and it cost that homeowner $50,000. So just something, another situation I ran across that's a little more similar than trying to look at just new construction as it is. And it's an existing residence, their septic failed, they needed the sewer, had to be hooked up to it, and it was a 189 feet, which is right in the range of some of these properties. And they were talking about how to pay upwards of $50,000 for that. So just something I was digging around on the internet.
Thanks, Ryan. Larry?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Two issues that come up. One is the idea of what a fair price would be. I appreciate all the property owners and their input and their thoughtfulness. But again, that's somewhat arbitrary number, depending on each property. One property owner might say, "I think it's fair to pay 50% of the cost." Another property owner might say, "I can't afford that, and I can pay 30% of the cost." And so that's an issue. I mean, I've not heard any numbers given back to us as a group to say, "We think this figure would be reasonable." And that's your regardless of what decision might be made afterward. It would be helpful to know what fair is, I guess. The other thing is, I think, 33% is a pretty significant drop in the cost. I think that was our intention as a council and as a city to try to look at this again, take another look, and that's how this number came up, the number being presented in the resolution tonight. The third thing I think is really important. Someone is going to pay for that, and including all the property owners on Janesville Street affected by the decision tonight. Because if it isn't paid for by those property owners, particularly that portion, that portion will be passed on to all taxpayers. And in some ways, it will have to be recouped in a special assessment across the entire state city or some other method of increased water rates or sewer rates. Development is part of the whole community. It isn't just a part of the community. So at some point, our city is going to grow, and it behooves us to be good planners. And I really feel that we don't want to put an eight-inch pipe in when in fact, there's a very good chance, or at least any chance, that we'll need a 10-inch pipe.
Okay. Any other comments by staff? Larry, I just want to let you know you're not muted if you wanted to be muted.
I just, one point of clarification, I think Larry knows, but I just want to make sure that folks, it's clear. Irrespective of what the decision is in terms of assessments this evening or at some future meeting, it is still the city's intent to install a 10-inch main at a 22-foot depth for future construction. That's still our intention, that's still our plan, and construction on that may occur as early as next week. It's just a matter of how that assessment will be a portion that's on the table at this time. So I just wanted to make sure that folks are clear that that is our intention to prepare for future development, similar to what we did at Red Hawk Farms and other subdivisions that have developed over the last handful of years, so. What, I guess, I'm sorry, one, one more thing. We did receive, and the council did, it was forwarded on to them, we did receive an email from from Pat Murphy today. And we forward that on to the council. And although I don't know that she specifically asked us to address her questions at tonight's meeting, I thought it would be beneficial for folks to kind of hear the answers. She raised a question about an installation of a new septic system approximately 15 years ago. And yes, that that is correct. That was decision that was made at that time because sanitary sewer wasn't available at a reasonable distance or cost at that time. And at the time that that septic system was installed, that property owner signed an agreement with the city of Milton to hook up to city sanitary sewer once that became, once that septic system failed. So that, so we do have that, and we do have that agreement. The other question was, how how long has the ordinance been in place for how long has the city policy been in place to require hookup at the time a septic system fails? The answer to that is, it's been over 30 years that that ordinance has been in place. So it isn't a new one. And then is there a connection fee? Once somebody does hook up, yes, that there is. That's for anywhere in the city. Irrespective of it's, if it's new or old or existing or new. I think that cost is about 1,200 bucks, if I remember based on our conversation the other day. So even the brand-new houses that were just built in Red Hawk Farms paid that connection fee. So I think those were her questions. But I wanted everybody to kind of hear that, those responses. I can, we can respond via email to Pat, since she wasn't able to make it tonight, but again, I don't know if that was her intention to have us kind of read this tonight or answer those questions tonight, but I figured it doesn't hurt to do so.
in addition to the assessment, if someone's septic were to fail, they would pay the assessment either in full or over a period of five years, and then in addition, they would have a connection fee? And have we ever in the past waived that connection fee?
Not that I'm aware of. And that's, once the sanitary sewer main is installed, and Mark and Howie can jump in, you know, it's buried underground at a considerable depth. The connection fee would be the fee associated with digging back into the ground to create that, to connect that lateral. And and places stop would be my guess. There's an associated cost and effort to do so. Yeah, it's not a matter that when this main's installed, everybody gets hooked up to sewer, and we just don't turn it on. It's, it's there in the right of way, and then they would need to dig it up to to connect to it. Is that, is that a kind of a fair 30,000-foot explanation, Mark and Howie?
The sewer connection fee is actually, it depends on how many fixtures you have in your house. So it varies in cost. So the more, the more that you discharge to the treatment plant, then you would pay more at the initial. But that's where everyone in the city, if anybody adds a sink or anything, they they pay that fee. Otherwise, it's just what your plumber would charge you.
And that's to help recapture some of the costs of the actual treatment plant for that capacity, for that additional load that each faucet discharges into the, that requires treatment at the treatment plant.
I have a question. Let's say there was no, there was no septic failure like we have right now. How would, how would we proceed today and in the future with those houses in that subdivision with the septics? Like, let's just say everybody's septic was okay today.
We, yeah, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having this conversation, I guess, is the short answer. Because because the ordinance indicates that a connection is not required until a septic system fails or is deemed to be failing. Those property owners would carry on with their life with no assessment until one of them had a failed septic, which is, which is an inevitability. It's just a matter, it, it just, we just don't know the timing of that. It might not happen, you know, if if we took Mr. Mann's house out of this equation, you know, it might not be for 15 years, or it might be 15 days. It's, it's, it's hard to know when the number of properties that are involved. And that would be, that'd be the same in other locations. There aren't many properties, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, there aren't many properties within the city of Milton that are currently on septic. I know there are some on Vincent, and that that conversation has been bandied about for a number of years since I've been here of a property owner on there who doesn't, does not have a failing septic, but is interested in hooking up to rid himself of the continual cost and unknown cost associated with the septic. So that that conversation's been kind of ongoing for the last couple of years, and it's just a matter of when he says he wants to hook up or his septic fails.
I think the only other part of that, too, would be if if there ever were a future development that needed sewer service, that would require the extension of the sewer. But my, my understanding would be that that sewer construction, by the way, the ordinance is written, is still assessable at that point. Again, some of the costs, we may be having this unbundled discussion still. But I think there's still some portion, according to the way the ordinance is written, that would be assessable to the adjacent property owners. So it would be like, yeah, it would be either a failing septic somewhere else or development, to answer your question.
Yes, a very similar situation, I guess, for, for, for at the July 21st meeting. We talked about the assessments along North Janesville Street, and then we also talked about assessments for the lift station on the Parkview Drive. The YMCA has been in existence for eight years. They have their own kind of private sanitary sewer system. Once the lift station was installed and they were able to be served by City Sewer, they were then levied an assessment for that lift station cost. And that was $50,000, $60,000. So that would be a similar situation. They were an existing facility that had their own kind of system set up. But they had an agreement with the city that they would hook up once that became available to them. So that, that, that is a pretty similar situation that just took place two weeks ago.
And then one last question. Is there something unique about our ordinance? Or that's out of typical ordinances in regards to this? I don't, I haven't researched what other cities have for ordinances. Is there a variety of ordinances, or is this like a standard operating procedure ordinance for municipalities?
I can let Mark talk about his experience. He's got experience in more communities than I do, but no, there's not a standard operating one, but the most common approach that I'm aware of in my experience and in my, in my work in other community, communities pluralized, because, you know, not only, I mean, I've worked in Milton, but I've also worked in Janesville, but Rock Township, La Prairie Township, Janesville Township, Harmony Township. This is the most common approach that I'm aware of. And like I said at the meeting on the July 21st, Milton is probably more lenient than the other communities that I'm aware of in terms of allowing for deferments that don't have interest accrual and not mandating hookup at the time that systems are available. Because that, that is another approach that's often taken, is once a system is available, then hookup is required, hookup is mandated irrespective of the integrity of your septic system. Most often, those are handled through attachment agreements or annexation agreements. But, you know, like in Rock Township in the city of Janesville, if you have a failed septic, you must annex into the city and you must hook up to City Sewer. That's, there's no option. So, you know, Milton is much more lenient than than those examples that that I'm familiar with. But my guess is, if there's 100 communities, there's 100 different ordinances. But the general gist of our ordinance is in line with the vast majority that I'm aware of. But I would say is more lenient. Mark probably has more experience in other communities. You know, Windsor and whatnot, I didn't, Mark, what's your experience been, Mark Langer, that is? Maybe Mark Schrader, too?
Yeah, I have not actually dealt with situation quite like this in the past. Similar to what Al said, I know the assessments, you know, there's different ordinances in different communities. And I think in this case, you know, similar to this unbundling, you know, I have seen that with developments where some of the costs were reduced on a, on a, one project in particular, I recall. And the developer, or, you know, the developer picked up the extra portion of the work. But the the residents or the existing developments did incur some costs. But I don't have a ton of experience with specific ordinances.
You wish I could speak to that just briefly. Every community I'm aware of that, well, I'll just say they're incorporated communities, they're either a village or a city, has ordinances similar to those of the city of Milton, all of them are oriented towards encouraging and accomplishing connection to the city or municipal utilities rather than onsite utilities whenever possible. Number one, that's, that's the emphasis is that for sanitary sewer, if possible, to connect to that and city water, the same thing. So that's a common theme for all the municipalities that are incorporated. Or maybe a town that has a sanitary district. So that's, that's common. And it's also a common approach that if it's available, that it's required to be hooked up as a result of that. It is sometimes permitted by municipalities to defer and sometimes not. I would say, in actually looking at the Milton ordinance, if it's available, there's the council is being very discretionary and not requiring it based on the ordinances. That is not requiring a hookup immediately. So so I would say that's, that's typical. And if there's a situation where they may not hook up, that's where, where they might have a situation where it would cost, say they'd have to run, you know, several hundred feet and only be able to serve one property. Now, if they, if they could spread that cost out over several properties, then in my experience, the normal process, the normal procedure for municipality would be to then install it and then assess it and spread out the cost over multiple properties. So so in essence, yeah, what the city is doing is not unusual. I would agree with what Mark said, it's also, I've seen it in the past where there's been some unbundling. Most often, it occurs with a development project with somebody else either paying for that additional cost that the assess people don't, or there being some future kickback, as it were, or reimbursement to those paying the special assessments that that that's not normally done in the context of this kind of assessment, though, where you have residential properties. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it's not an unusual approach.
the item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on final resolutions 2020 regarding assessments for the sanitary sewer main installation along North Janesville Street. Is there any action that the council wants to take?
I wouldn't know how to word it, but I would, I would like to continue with it, with the idea that, you know, I would recommend going ahead with it with the idea that we would use the unbundling charges, assuming the cost of the 10-foot you know, the eight to 10-foot charges with the city costs, and then the 0-to-8-foot be placed on the homeowner.
It may have some clarification. I believe the way that it is written now incorporates Mark's Chart III.
That is correct, yeah. The resolution has been amended or altered to reflect Table III, which is, in essence, what Teresa just described.
The unbundling and the, the down charges based on smaller-sized main and so on.
Correct. Yeah, the only item to be, then, if if approved, then staff would return at some point in the future with a cost recovery mechanism for the residual of 116,000. But that doesn't need to be decided tonight. So that, that would be the only unanswered portion of it, if the council chooses to go with the approach that was prescribed in Mark's memo and then corresponding to the revised resolution included in tonight's packet.
I like the way that Teresa described it. If somebody, if she makes that into a motion, I would second it.
So, so Al, just to clarify, it would just be a motion to approve Resolution 2020-20?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, because there's been two, two versions of it. So it'd be motion to approve Public Works Resolution 2020-20 as revised effective August 4th, 2020, correct?
Correct. Thank you. Yes.
That's your motion, Teresa?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries then. And we'll move on to item number eight. And I want to thank everybody for their input. I think that the council took your input seriously from the last meeting. I understand that most of you are probably disappointed even though there was a reduction in the cost, that it's a high assessment. And we, we do understand that. And I appreciate you being engaged, having thoughtful research and questions. And if you have further questions, you know, please let us know. And you can attend any future meeting as well, too. So I do, I just want to acknowledge everybody that participated in this discussion.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action on Rocky's LLC application for a Class B retail license fermented malt beverage and a Class C retail license wine.
So a few weeks ago, the common council approved all Class B, Class A licenses that were applied for at the time. One that was, that we had mentioned was absent at the time was for Rocky's Hometown Pizza and Subs. Rocky, the owner, has subsequently come in and turned in her paperwork to have a new license, which would be a Class B retail license for fermented malt beverage and a Class C retail uh uh, wine license, which is what she's always had since she's open. Uh, but she was remiss in turning her paperwork in on time to be, uh, handled with the other approvals that took place a few weeks ago. So this is a continuation of what Rocky has always been doing, uh, but just to coming, uh, a few meetings afterwards.
I would move approval.
Second.
Oh, you guys are just moving right along. We're just skipping the little round robin. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
And just to confirm, that's approval of both licenses? Okay.
Item nine, discussion and possible action regarding 2020 pavement preventative maintenance bid award.
So we, uh, went out to bid for our 2020 pavement improvement program, which was approved in last year's budget. Uh, received two bids, one from Farner Asphalt Sealers and one from Scott Construction. Farner Asphalt Sealers came in with the low bid of a base bid of 118,000 and with both alternates, uh, came in for a total bid of 134,000. You can see in the table below, uh, Mark's memo, what those street segments would be that would be, uh, touched in this program. And, uh, we would be recommending approval or acceptance of the bid from Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC in the amount of 134,753, which includes the two alternatives. Mark Langer, anything else?
No, um, you pretty much hit it on the head. There is a list of the streets that'll be receiving work, uh, listed in the bid tabulation. And Mike Jinkin from Farner Asphalt Sealers is here as well, if there's any questions, um, you know, specifically for him or questions for I, for myself.
We, you, Farner was the company that was successful as well last year. Um, so you've probably all seen and driven on their work on John Paul and Green Hill Circle and Plum Street and Rogers and Buton and Morgan and a handful of other places. So this would be a similar treatment for those that are, they are doing chip sealing for, which are the first seven segments listed on the second sheet, as well as the additional, uh, 12 that are listed for, um, crack sealing and joint repairs.
Well, that's quite a few streets that we're going to be.
Yes.
Probably be the last time we do this. You never know what the COVID budget will be like next year.
We don't know that yet, Mike. Don't, don't get too scared.
Yeah, no doubt, right? Well, that's, well, we appreciate the opportunity and, yeah, we're gonna, now we're gonna execute, so, thank you.
Okay, do you guys just wanna, do you wanna talk or do you just want to move to a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the bid.
And Ryan's gonna second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on, that motion carries. Item ten.
We'll see ya.
Okay, Marky, Mark, you go right ahead, skip out a team building.
Yeah, I'll make it up next time.
Oh, yes, you will. You'll be leading us on the pledge allegiance for.
All right, we'll see ya.
Bye, take care. All right, discussion of possible action regarding revisions to semi-parking ordinance 2020-478.
I'm gonna mute my mic, because this is all Chief Mark work.
Because I couldn't stop talking about trucks and truck parking, apparently. Um, so this, uh, ordinance is now back for a second reading. You'll recall during the last reading, we, um, I brought you late some concern about how we were actually defining trucks and, um, that were 12,000 pounds or more. We did not want to unnecessarily restrict personal vehicles as, uh, personal trucks are now getting larger and larger. So we have now edited the language to specifically mention commercial motor vehicles. Over 12,000 pounds would be subject to the restriction, um, and, and, um, required to park on Commerce Way rather than on neighborhood streets. And this is back for a second reading tonight. And if there aren't any suggestions for further revisions, um, you can approve, waive third reading and adopt tonight.
Okay, do we want to discuss? I know we've, uh, talked about this and thought about it already. So we, we, we can move to a motion if the council so desires. Linda? Unmute yourself.
Sorry, I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading, waive the third and adopt ordinance number 2020-478.
Is there a second?
Second.
Phil seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for, strategic planning. Scott, are you talking or not to us?
Not to you.
Sorry, it's just the, the dangers of being on a Zoom meeting and moving your lips.
Remember, secret secrets are never fun. Secret secrets hurt someone.
Well, I'll just do this, then.
I knew that was coming. Okay, um, so, I think I'm just gonna hand this over to Inga then, right? Where are you, Inga? I can't find you on my screen anymore. There you are.
Um, I guess, just a quick question, does anyone need a break before we jump into this?
You know, that's a really good idea, because, um, I actually received a little bit of criticism, not from any of you, but from other people, that I just do not give the council breaks. We have these, uh, meetings that go on for a long period of time. So I am not opposed at all if anybody wants to get up, walk around for five minutes or something, or...
Hey, Inga and I were on a lead call today and the mayor of DePere and the mayor of Green Bay spoke. And, uh, back in July, Green Bay had a seven-hour meeting and DePere had a five-hour meeting to talk about a local mask mandate. So, we're doing great here.
And no breaks?
I didn't, he didn't, they didn't say if there was breaks, I didn't know. But a seven-hour meeting, I can't even imagine that. I've been at some four and five-hour ones in Janesville, but seven hours.
Al, they must have gigantic stipends for their council, huh?
Hourly, by the syllable, you get paid by the syllable.
They both have mayors, so you're gonna have to talk to Adisa about that.
Do you want to take five minutes and then we'll come back and tackle this part?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and get started? I'm wondering if Linda is having internet connection problems.
That's a possibility. Can you guys all see my screen?
Yep.
The...
Okay. So we are ready to move into the discussion on the strategic plan. And tonight, we're going to focus on discussing the strengths, issues and challenges facing the community in the next five years. And we'll, if there's time, we'll see how everyone's feeling. Um, we'll review the mission, vision and value statements from the previous meeting and some of the, um, comments that I received back as well. So this is just, again, a timeline of, um, what the process is going to be. In progress right now is that mission, vision and values, as I talked about just now. And we're in the strengths and major issues, challenges phase of the strategic planning process. So with that, we had a leadership team meeting last week on July 30th. The council's meeting tonight, we have an employee focus group scheduled for tomorrow. The community workshop is scheduled for Thursday. And we have a high school student focus group scheduled for Monday as well. So, like I said last week, um, the book that we kind of based this whole process off of, Planning the Future, they discuss identifying the major issues and challenges, but we're taking it just a little bit further by also talking about our strengths, because we want to know, um, what our strengths are and what we want to make sure that we maintain for the community in the future. So one example, I hear a lot of people say that they really like Milton's small-town charm. So that is something that we'd want to potentially maintain and we'd want to develop strategies in order, in order to do that. So this is the, um, public strategic planning model that John Luthy outlines in his book. Um, it, we're, the strategic plan is really driven by issues and data. So once we identify the issues, those challenges, those strengths, then we can move into creating issue statements and developing the goals, objectives, strategies and actions. So when he talks about identifying an issue or a strength or challenge, it's usually identified as something that's too high, meeting standards, or too low. And then the goals would be to reduce, to maintain or to increase, and then by how much and by when. So tonight, like I said, we're focusing on the strengths, issues and challenges. The goal for us is to focus on the major issues and challenges and those big strengths that we have, um, in the community and the organization. We're not trying to focus on day-to-day operations, but more of those larger-scale, um, items that we can strategically plan for. So, we are going to do the same, um, activity that I did with the department head team last week. Um, we're going to look at internal and external issues on both a tangible and intangible level. So what that means is, um, just to give some examples, internal tangible, that would be location, funding, equipment. Um, an internal intangible would be like organizational culture. External tangible would be like a water system, the park facilities. And an external intangible would be the image of the city of Milton to the outside community, the trust we have with our community members and community relations. So I'm going to end this piece of it. And I'm going, what I decided to do this time was to use just a Word doc, because then hopefully, we won't have so many spelling errors, right? So this is what I have set up. Everyone's seen this on their screen, the external, internal and broken up into tangible and intangible. So what, what we started with for the department head team was we started talking about strengths. So we could start strengths, um, tangible, external, um, things that we think are going well. Someone wants to throw out some ideas?
Um, I think one of our strengths, I really like, is our, is our exterior grant. Uh, and I'd like to see us expand that, but I think, uh, it's a good strength. I'd like to see us not only expand it, but maybe reduce, uh, things, maybe 20 years or whatever. That's a detail, but I, I want to preserve the integrity of our properties in the community. Yeah, especially residential properties.
So the, the residential exterior grant program?
Yeah, I mean, I think both are good, Inga, but my current thought right now is the residential one.
Okay.
I think that's a strength we have and I think it's a, a good, a good thing for the community. I'd like to expand it, make it available across the community, too.
Yeah. What other strengths do you think the community has or the organization? Oh, Linda, you're on mute.
Teamwork amongst our different departments.
I think we should add communication to that as well, teamwork and communication.
Fiscal responsibility.
What else do you like about Milton? I mean, we did have a 2018 Library of the Year.
I do like our library and I also think we have a wonderful park system. Could we do better, of course, but I think we have a really good park system.
I think that we have a lot of, um, age, I don't know how I want to say this. Um, age-appropriate recreation in our community, uh, recreation for all ages. I don't know how you want to say that.
And then this is, um, I guess, an exercise from the perspective of you as council members, but also you as community members. So if there's certain things that, um, that you think is a strength from either of those two different perspectives, then we can include them on the list, too.
I think we have a good water system, you know, good infrastructure and we're, um, maintaining our roads and infrastructure.
Well, I've always said she likes the taste of her water.
We can also talk about challenges. We don't have to just focus on strengths now. That's kind of the nice thing about having it all laid out right here.
And the development's a challenge for the tangible.
What was that?
New development is gonna always be a challenge for our infrastructure.
I would say going along with the new development would just be stress on public works.
Public works in our other departments, too, I guess.
Yeah, for sure. Declining, um, shared revenue opportunities for funds.
Howie, were you gonna say something? You were, you're just on mute. I thought I heard, okay.
I think that, um, we are attracting new residents and new development. And that's a positive. And I think some of our partnerships with other community stakeholders is a positive.
Would some of those be intangible rather than tangible, Inga?
Well, that's, that's what I always go back and forth with, it's...
If that one probably is intangible, it's, you know...
The partnerships?
Yeah. And also probably fiscal responsibility.
Affordable housing.
Challenge.
Challenge. Um, workforce housing.
Another challenger opportunity, I guess, depending how you look at it, is, um, you know, hotel or motel opportunities, you know, we want, we try to encourage the Milton to be a location for people to spend a day or two. And that would be something we might want to look at. Or bed and breakfast, just in general, housing opportunities for tourists.
I think an intangible maybe is adaptability. I think, uh, the council and city staff have adapted to the new, uh, way of managing our city during a pandemic. And I also think our community as a whole has made adaptations and adjustments quickly.
That could also go into internal also, because it's the, it's our professional staffing that, um, is a big part of what we do and how successful we are.
I think another strength is our communication with the community and with each other, but I'm thinking in terms of our social media presence, our newsletters, our strategic planning itself. So I think that community engagement is a strength, and I also think it's a challenge at the same time.
A perfect example of that is having public hearings even when we're not required to.
Yep. And then probably a challenge is maybe in the tangible area to the right, and the internal might be a future of our fire department.
And other shared services.
Yeah, good ad. Yeah.
I think we'll have climate and environmental and weather challenges going forward.
Inga, or in group, I think we may be challenged along with that climate change and environmental things is become sewer and water upgrade potentials for our plants, because, you know, just the science that's evolving and the demand from the UNR and state regulations.
Okay.
On the internal side, the quality of our public facilities, with the exception of the fire department, you know, we've got a modern city hall, modern police station, modern library, modern public works building. We're pretty unusual. It's the fire station that's the exception.
Technology, I think, is a strength. I think it can also be a challenge.
How about some more external intangibles? So we're looking at image, trust, community relations.
Juror communications with the community, one, maybe slide over there. The tangible to intangible. I know you want to add one in there, but-
Can it be both? Because if we can see it and engage in it, can it be tangible and intangible?
Oh, it's tangible as being like a physical entity versus, whereas communication isn't so much a physical entity as it is a passing of an idea, maybe?
Well, we have physical, a physical presence or virtual presence, I guess, on social media. There's newsletters, that that's a tangible item.
Yeah.
It can probably be both places, I guess. We just won't-
I would say, you know, we talked about the library, but we also, as a community, have had statewide recognition. Remember, we are on the cover of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities publication along with the library, and we also have a strong reputation in Southern Wisconsin and throughout the state of being easy to work with, as far as our staff and development is concerned.
I think, I think along with that comes innovation. I can think of any number of innovative ideas or thoughts that have come into play in our governments here in Milton. And I don't want to forget the staff, that's a positive. We have some really dedicated people that are very skilled and very committed to their work. That's not always found in a community.
Also, I think we're responsive to our business community. Remember when we got fiber optics out to the business park? That was something that was lacking, so I do think we try to be responsive to our business community and to our residents, to the best of our-
I think that part of a challenge for that would be the land, available land in the industrial park.
Yeah, suitable for development.
Also a challenge for us, kind of, along with that, is, you know, the challenge being, how big do we want to become, you know, both not only in commercial and industrial, but also residential? Or how big should we become? I think that's a challenge to figure that out. My point being, if you want to be a real large city, that's one thing. You want to keep a smaller city, that's another. How about as a challenge, retaining or enhancing our relationship with our neighboring community? I think that's a challenge. As Milton grows and potentially expands, how do you keep relations with your surrounding townships, your surrounding communities? Keep positive.
Can you say that one more time?
Um, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. I mean, the challenge being that trying to keep positive relationships with your surrounding communities and townships, et cetera, with the growth of our city. As we grow, that pushes the envelope in terms of boundaries and services and public turn.
No, that was, I was just trying, I have, you know, I'm sharing my screen now, so I was trying to make sure that I was still recording the meeting. So I was a little distracted there. So that was my fault, not yours.
I appreciate what you just said.
So let's talk a little bit more about internal, internal tangible. If you have any comments on that area?
Maintaining qualified personnel.
I don't know how to say this, but I really feel that our council, I've been on several councils and boards, I feel our council makes a valiant effort to do their homework. I don't know how to say that any better. It's that we go, we encourage it, obviously, when people are elected to the council, but we have a really strong ethic that says, you know, do your homework. And oftentimes, council members bring information from the outside or the thick end. I think that doesn't happen often in other communities.
Yeah, I think our council is engaged with the the process of governing. And I also like how our council is interested in learning and participating in trainings and conferences and like just growing as an elected official. I appreciate that.
As well as our city staff.
I think the council is surprisingly compatible as well. You know, on a given item, I might vote differently than Teresa, or I might vote differently than Linda. But I'm not even sure what those issues are going to be. You know, sometimes you get into those splits where, you know, you know that those three are going to vote this way and that three are going to vote the other way. We've got a remarkably compatible group in that, because people do their homework, you know, people are voting what they believe is in the best interest of the whole community, as opposed to some narrow personal interest.
I do like that, that we don't, along those lines, that we don't have like overbearing personalities or anyone that monopolizes the discussions. Like, I think that we do a nice job of everyone participating, but, you know, like, sometimes on councils, you have one person that's kind of, you know, running the whole show and being overbearing, and I, you know, it feels more equitable.
I agree with you there, too. R-E-S-P-E-C-T is the Franklin's thing. But it's true, and I thought it goes both ways. I feel like I can call any city staff person or employee or whatever their level and talk to them about an issue, ask questions, and I think that they feel free to come back to me and to the other council member with discussion and questions and issues, and that's respect. That's wonderful.
And I do think the council sets the tone for the entire organization along with the management team. And I appreciate that.
What else do you guys think?
Longevity of our city staff. I think that's definitely a plus.
It's also a challenge when we lose institutional knowledge to retirement.
If we allow them.
Maybe the challenge is to have systems in place that allow mentoring or training to replace it as time goes on. You know, planning that, right? Person's going to leave.
Succession planning is the typical term for that.
Thank you.
Already typed that. There we go.
Sorry, I had you minimized.
You know, I don't want to forget the mayor. I'm not trying to earn brownie points here. But I really appreciate our current mayor's style. It goes well with the government's style that we're trying to set in place, offering input, providing it in a straightforward way, but not, how's the word? Not being overbearing, you know, letting the council have input, letting the council think about how things might be or could be for city staff. So I appreciate that. That's a strength.
I just want to know, are we still ahead in the census? Because I think that's a strength.
Yes, we are. We're over 80% now.
I am out here hustling to get you guys pizza, so.
If we ever meet in person again.
I was going to say, delivering that to our homes.
Rocky delivers. I love-
That's right.
I do think that Rocky says pizza by the slice, too, so we can just drop him off.
I'll just, I'll drive by and throw a slice out the window.
I'll wear my mask and come out and get it.
So, so we are at a point now, you know, we're in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, not quite sure what's on the horizon, but what are some potential futures that we could be seeing in the next year, two years that might, that we might want to document here?
I think property tax collection could become an issue. And what will happen when people can't pay their taxes, you know, to the community?
Yeah, I think homelessness might become a concern if we have evictions and just fiscal challenges as far, and I know we talked about this already, but when we talk about, you know, shared revenue and state aid, you know, there could be decreases from, you know, federal to state to local. So I think the challenge is going to be to conserve, to tackle staffing levels and service levels, keeping them affordable and being within our expenditure restraint and revenue caps.
And healthcare could become an issue. I'm on board that we're already trying to figure out how we're going to generate enough Medicaid funding in the state to take care of people. So that's going to pass down to other insurers as well, if this continues.
Bill, did you want to say something?
You know, I don't know quite how to express it, but given the current framework, there's an awful lot of stress, and people, I think, are more and more, day by day, looking for somebody to blame. And, you know, council in particular, we're kind of easy targets for that. And so what it converts into is, you know, we're going to have to have some thick skin, because people are under a lot of stress, and the stress is real. And, you know, it may be a job, it may be health, it may be any number of issues that is the stressor, but the reaction is one of, you know, who made it bad like this? And it manifests itself in different kinds of ways.
I agree, and I also think the community needs to be led through it. You know, as a group, we have to have strong leadership and really bring our community together and also support them and cheer them on and reassure them. And I think one of the ways that we have done it and will continue to do it is we're going to keep meeting, the government is still going to function, and we're all going to function. And we have the opportunity and obligation to set the example. And I really appreciate Bill bringing that up.
So I put increased stress felt by community members as an intangible external issue. Does that kind of sum up your point, Bill, or is there maybe a better way to say it?
I don't know that there is a better way to say it. I think, you know, it's, it's the, it's how it manifests itself that creates the problem, but I think that the stress is there, and that's the real piece.
I think the way that we address some of that is our, it's a strength for us, but the positive police policies and the positive police force that we have in our community is going to help in that. I don't see overreaction on the part of our police, and I appreciate Bill Chief Markworth and fellow officers.
I second that, yeah.
And that's one that's well, I think, in dealing with some of the stress that are probably going to come.
I think that hiring is going to be a lot more difficult with our police departments, and I don't think it's going to be, it's not- And I don't think it's going to be, it's not just going to be us. I feel like that's just going to be across the nation.
I know that we talked a little bit in the department head meeting about an increased difficulty for police officers, but also just other staff in general, and how we used to see application levels a lot higher than what we're seeing now for even a general labor position at the Public Works Department. So I think recruitment in the future is just, in general, going to be more and more difficult.
And the expectations will probably be higher for those positions, too.
Yeah, and
and all that.
Yeah, and I'm basing that comment mainly on the recruitments that we did prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. With a higher unemployment rate right now, I don't know what that means for our recruitments for those positions, if that will have a significant impact or not. Bill, were you going to say something?
No.
No? Okay, I thought, it looked like you were raising your hand there for a second.
I think another challenge that we will have will be the support that we will be able to give to our nonprofits. Especially with the pandemic. I think that's, I think the public is going to be a little more concerned about our support to those organizations.
I hear what you're saying, Alina. It also might affect contributions, right, to special projects in the community. Thinking of Story Gardens and the gathering place and all of those sort of things might become more challenging if unemployment continues or increases and things like that.
I think one of the challenges on the intangible internal side, not only the public has been under stress, but staff has been under stress, too. So kind of staff burnout and the fact that we've expected people to do unusual kinds of things. And so I think we're going to see some signs that staff is burned out and that may manifest itself in a variety of ways, too.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Bill, because one of the things that we did to try to mitigate that, and we haven't in a while.